Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being with us tonight for the Palo Alto's City Council Candidates Forum for the November 5th election. I am Sigrid Pinsky, a member of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto, and I will be the moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nationwide organization that was founded in 1920 after the women won the right to vote. The League invigils a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League is nonpartisan, meaning neither support nor oppose candidates or parties. Our organization has two distinct roles. One is advocacy for public policy issues that we have studied and developed positions on. The other is voter service, which brings voters impartial information on issues and candidates. Voter service is the hat we're wearing tonight as we present this forum to you where you can learn more about the candidates running for Palo Alto City Council. Tonight, you'll have the opportunity to hear from eight of the nine candidates running. The candidates with us tonight are Pat Burt, Katie Cosi, Anne Cribbs, Henry Etskowitz, George Lu, Keith Rektal, Greer Stone, and Carrie Templeton. Candidate Doria Suma cannot be with us tonight. She has submitted a statement, which I'll read after the candidates present have done their opening question. Before we Sorry, before we begin, I want to remind the candidates and the audience that this evening is a forum, not a debate, so we will have no rebuttal and no personal attacks. Candidates have been asked to focus on their own campaigns. I'd also like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under guidelines that the League has developed for this forum. Also, because it's a Zoom webinar, only the candidates and the moderator will have their microphones activated. This forum will be posted to the League's YouTube channel, the link to which can be found on our website, l w v palo alto dot org. Note that whenever this recording is aired, it must be shown in its entirety to ensure that no candidate's statements are taken out of context. All candidates have agreed to this requirement. I'd like to briefly go over the format for our session tonight. We're scheduled to finish by 6:00 PM. To help us keep on track, we're using a computerized stopwatch. And I would like to again remind the candidates, respect our time limits because I will enforce them. In lieu of opening statements tonight, I will ask each candidate to give a one and a half minute description of their qualifications to serve in the office they are seeking. We will then go to our question period. Candidates will be called on in alternating order for each question, and we'll have up to one minute to answer each question. I remind the candidates that you can provide shorter answers, and that might get us extra time for another question. I also have asked the candidates to keep themselves muted when they're not speaking. Questions for this forum have been solicited ahead of time from everyone who registered. In addition, tonight, our audience members can send live questions by email to forumquestions at l w v palo alto dot org. This email address is being posted in the chat box right now, I am told. Note that audience members cannot comment in the chat. League members are screening the questions we received to avoid duplication and to cover as wide a range of topics as we can. In lieu of closing statements tonight, we'll ask a final question of all the candidates. And that question is, what question do you wish we had asked that we didn't ask you? This gives candidates an opportunity to talk about an issue or legislative area that they feel deserves more attention. Each candidate will be allowed 1.5 minutes to answer the closing question in the reverse order of the opening question. Alright, so we're going to go to the opening question now. And again, that is, what are your qualifications in running for this office? And Ms. Templeton, you're first.
Thank you so much, Sigrid, and thank you to the League and everybody who's been, who's attending today. I'm Carrie Templeton, and I'm running for Palo Alto City Council. I have lived in Palo Alto for nearly 20 years, and I've been raising my family here and also earned my master's degree at Stanford University and spent a decade as a program manager in high tech at Google. Since then, I have been involved in community service, joining nonprofit boards, local and regional groups, including chances to work with all of you, and also in city-appointed commissions and boards, including the Planning and Transportation Commission for six years. Also worked on the NV cap with some of our other candidates and on the Railroad Crossing Working Group at the X cap. I have been working on program policies, which are probably too many to list right now, but I've also worked on the Valley Waters Measure S campaign to help protect our creeks. And that's sort of outside the city activity. And I've had the pleasure to work for the state senate for two years before leaving to work on an important congressional campaign last fall. I've been endorsed by Senator Becker, Congresswoman Anna Eschew, Assemblymember Mark Berman, and of course Supervisor Joe Semidion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cosi, you're next.
Thank you. Thank you all for taking the time to spend your Saturday afternoon with us. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us. My name is Katie Cosi. I've lived in Palo Alto my entire life, over 30 years, and I'm a proud graduate of Aloney, JLS, and Pally. I bring not only a degree focused on local government, my service on our city's Human Relations Commission, helping ensure city policymaking is fair and equal, but I also professionally work with city governments to help identify where delays are happening so their communities can get efficient repairs and improvements on their streets. I'm endorsed by over 200 elected officials, community leaders, and neighbors like you who know and trust my experience. But the most important experience I bring is my previous work in our local housing nonprofits, where I worked both on policy and hands-on with our seniors and families when they're close to having nowhere to live. That's what motivated me to run because I know firsthand what our community members are going through when they're in crisis and navigating our city's resources. I'm running to ensure our city is one where all community members can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burt.
Thank you. So I'm a lifelong resident of Santa Clara County. Both my parents were teachers locally, and I've worked in Palo Alto from the time I was in college, working for Co-op Markets and know the community intimately. My wife and I moved here in 1980. And through our business, we had a business that was a model in sustainable manufacturing, and I spent 25 years in environmental policy in that arena. In the mid 90s, I ended up chairing the University South Neighborhoods Group that led the SOFA area plan, which created Heritage Park and the what will be our history center of affordable housing, a daycare center. And then I went on the Planning and Transportation Commission for nine years, and then went on the City Council for another nine years. I returned to the City Council in 2021. I've served three terms as mayor with elected by three very different sets of colleagues. I currently serve on the Valley Transportation Board, where I was elected Chair last year. I'm on the Caltrain Board and the BCDC Boards. And then I chair our Finance Committee and our Rail Committee, and I serve on our Coverley, Stanford Retail, and Climate Committees.
Thank you. Mr. Etskowitz.
I'm Henry Etskowitz. I'm an innovation scholar and community organizer. I was in quiet and productive retirement when Stanford University took over Oak Creek Apartments where I live and tried to push out the seniors. We pushed back. We organized, we petitioned, and we won. We're here to stay, as long as biological limits allow. And in that time, I learned that you have to do more than just push back against something you don't want. You have to provide alternatives. And we figured out the alternative was to build affordable housing on a large scale, utilizing the parking lots and garages of the Stanford Shopping Center to bring down the land cost to make it practical. So although I oppose Stanford University, I'm a Stanford University donor, I give my papers to Green Library, and I want to work with Stanford to accomplish these goals. Also relating to climate change, we must act to build and make an urban forest, plant that along San Antonio, and underground the railroad, build a linear park. So I have fresh ideas to bring to this council, and I hope I've made a, I'll make a case for bringing these ideas. So put an innovation scholar on the City Council of the Homeland of Innovation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lu.
Thank you to the League, and thank you, everyone, joining us. I'm George Lu. My background, I grew up in Millbrae, so that's around 25 minutes away from here, but I was always drawn to Palo Alto. I came here for Chinese school on the weekends. I came here to hang out with friends. I went to Stanford. I had my first real job here in Palo Alto, and I now live next to Cal Ave. So as a basic qualification, I know and I love this community. I've had a successful career in technology. I've led teams, set clear goals, and managed nine-figure budgets. I currently work at Meta, focused on content moderation. Most notably, I worked on reducing misinformation during the 2020 and 2022 elections, and I currently work on a team focused on reducing hate speech, violence, and self-harm. I've always been interested in giving back. During the pandemic, I volunteered with the US Digital Response, helping municipalities with technology and operational needs to deliver food aid to seniors. And I now serve on the Planning and Transportation Commission. I've been vocal on issues like making sure El Camino bike lanes are as safe as possible and that our housing element can actually be approved and show a real commitment to housing. I have the qualifications to make the city more vibrant and more responsive, and I've been endorsed by amazing groups, most notably the Santa Clara Democratic Party. But I'm also supported by groups representing gun safety, renters, as well as realtors, environmental groups, and over 18 current and former school board and council members who see me as someone who can bring new energy and get things done.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for joining us. My name is Greer Stone. I'm the mayor of Palo Alto, a public school teacher. And for the past four years, I've had the privilege of representing you on the City Council. I first began in city government when I was just 23 years old, served as the Chair of the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission, and then for another several years as the Vice Chair of the Santa Clara County Human Rights Commission. As someone who grew up here, attended our schools, taught in our schools, I'm deeply committed to ensuring that our city continues to be a healthy, vibrant, and welcoming place for all. I believe I'm qualified for this position because I've showed over the last four years that I'm a collaborative leader who can work with all my colleagues in order to advance policies that matter to all of you. I've led on a variety of issues ranging from affordable housing to climate protections, rebuilding our public safety departments, and helping our city recover in a post-pandemic world. Currently, I'm focusing on youth mental health and well-being, furthering our production of affordable housing and continuing our climate, our climate goals, and working on helping connect community members with more events and to the city. I'm really proud to be endorsed by Congresswoman Anna Eschew, Supervisor Joe Semidion, Senator Josh Becker, the Sierra Club, District Attorney Jeff Rosen, and many former Palo Alto mayors, including Karen Holman, Liz Ness, and more. I really thank you all again for being here, taking the time to learn more about our vision for Palo Alto's future. Thank you to the League for organizing.
Thank you. Ms. Cribbs. You're muted, Ms. Cribbs.
Thank you. Now I'm not muted. Thank you very much, and thank you to the League for the work that you do on a regular basis to encourage people to vote. And I'm proud to say that I have voted since the election in the 1960s when Bobby Kennedy was killed, and I have encouraged my kids to vote in every single election, so it's kind of a big thing in our family. I've been in Palo Alto for quite a long time, 1967. During my time, I've been a renter, a homeowner. I co-founded the American Basketball League, the ABL, which created a professional league for women to play basketball on American soil and American game. I was the CEO and am of the Bay Area Sports Organizing Committee. We bid for the Olympic Games in 2012, 2016, and 2024. And while we didn't win the prize of the Olympics, we did win the silver medal, bringing the Bay Area together. I feel that my experience in big events will help and provide a perspective that is unique to the city. This is my first political campaign. I'm lucky to have so many people advising me. And I look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Rektal.
Thank you. Yeah, I grew up in a tiny town in the middle of Minnesota and came out to Stanford for graduate school. Fell in love with Palo Alto. It's a wonderful place. We've lived here for 28 years. You know, Palo Alto is not an easy place to buy a house, and we really struggled to find a house that would get it forward. And that really helps me understand the experience of other potential homeowners. We raised our children in Palo Alto. And you know, so the city and school programs were a big part of our lives. It's really a part, improve the quality of our lives. In particular, our kids were big users of parks and recreation programs. And so 12 years ago, I volunteered to join the Parks and Rec Commission. I wanted to help pay back and maintain that quality. And over the last 12 years, I've done a lot of city work with Parks Recreation and also Planning Commission, and about three big work groups, the Fry's redevelopment planning, the grade separation planning for the railroad, and the Housing Element Work Group. And also, two years ago, I led the campaign for Measure K, which is the business tax which funds affordable housing and funds public safety. A big part of my day job is I work with large groups of people to make spacecraft, and that requires a lot of negotiations, a lot of competing interests. And that, that has served me well, that, that ability. And hopefully, that'll serve me well in council, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to read Ms. Suma's statement that she submitted, and I'll stop when the timer stops. "I am a longtime Palo Alto resident with more than 17 years of service to our community. Most recently, as City Planning Commissioner for the past eight years, I have spent countless hours working in Palo Alto's most complex issues, hearing and responding to our community, and providing recommendations to City Council to enhance our quality of life. I am known among residents, colleagues, staff, and City Council members alike in city government and as independent thinker, having the ability to see the big picture and understand the details, listening to the voice of residents and businesses straightforward and doing thoughtful analysis for sensible solutions for our community. Why choose me? My deep knowledge of city issues, my 17-plus years of experience achieving results for residents and local businesses, and my relentless dedication to protecting our quality of life make me the best candidate to advocate for you as a City Council member. I deeply understand our community and know the critical issues we face. Palo Alto has been my home for over 35 years. I know what our residents love about this city, such as our schools and parks, and the issues they care about, such as preserving the quality of life we enjoy in Palo Alto. I've been focused on community service for 17-plus years. I began as president of my neighborhood association, followed by appointment to Palo Alto-wide leadership roles in a variety of community-focused committees and working groups." Okay. All right. Now it's time to go to audience questions. So our first question, and you'll have one minute to answer these questions. "Palo Alto's housing plan has been approved by the state. What kinds of local public financing would you support as part of a plan to increase the number of low and moderate-income homes in Palo Alto?" And for this question, Mr. Etskowitz, you're first.
This is the key. We all want affordable housing, but how to get it done? To do it, it has to be at scale. I propose university-city, 10,000 units of affordable housing built on the parking garages and parking lots of the Stanford Shopping Center. The first way to make it affordable is having Stanford provide the land. That removes one of the main costs. The second will be to support the bond issue coming up next year. And the third will bring the venture capital community on board that is now planning to develop California Forever in Solano County. Bring the venture capital community back home and involve them in developing their ideas for a city here in Palo Alto. Use our local resources together with the city, the university, and the VC and business community. We can solve affordable housing the way we've solved other problems in technology. We can solve our social problems as well."
Thank you. Mr. Rektal.
Yeah, so I mentioned two years ago, I ran the campaign for Measure K, and that is a small business tax, and some of that goes to affordable housing. It's very modest, but one of the reasons we implemented that is that Prop 13 really has changed the collection of taxes. Property taxes used to be split about 50/50 between residential and businesses. And because residences turn over, but businesses don't, that is really skewed, and now the residents pay far more in property tax than businesses do. And so we really do have to reach out the business community. It's in their own self-interest to have a healthy affordable housing, and so that is a prime source of funding, either with donations or additional taxes.
Thank you. Ms. Templeton.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Burt and Mr. Rektal on Measures, Measure K, and I also worked on some other local projects, but I think Measure K is the most relevant thing to mention here. There's part of that is just dedicated for affordable housing. We also talked about on the Planning Commission and other community forums is can we use some of the city-owned land to develop on, and will that be a way to bring in, bring down the prices of developing affordable housing? And that's a possibility to consider as well, is, you know, for example, parking lots that are just flat asphalt as our way to build those out where you can retain the parking but build some housing on top of that. I think that's worth considering, and it's part of, part of our discussions around the development of new housing or a housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cosi.
Thank you. Like many people, I was very disappointed that RM4, the Regional Housing Bond, to fund $20 billion in affordable housing, was removed from the ballot. And I think we're going to need to play a big role in advocating for its return. Having returned, having previously worked in housing, I bring a lot of relationships with affordable housing organizations, helping understand where their pain points are in our process, where our process becomes expensive for them. And that involves potentially reforming our process to have limited public hearings on housing applications. I also am the only candidate endorsed by the Attorney General, who helps ensure cities are meeting their housing requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Lu.
Thank you. Oh, I'll wait for the timer to reset. Thank you. We have in the ballpark of a few hundred affordable housing units that are somewhat close in the pipeline. That's not enough to really support our teachers, police, other workers. It's not enough to really move the needle on our, on the environmental costs of not having affordable housing in our community. We need a full court, full court approach. So we need bonds. We need to develop and partner with affordable housing developers on city-owned land. But I think we also need to go beyond 100% or significantly publicly funded affordable housing. We can partner with developers to incentivize and produce more affordable housing. Some of this could be in mixed income developments, but also we can learn from the successes of other cities, like other cities like LA, which have an executive directive that truly streamlines 100% privately-funded affordable housing. We need to bring similar programs to Palo Alto.
Thank you. Mr. Burt.
Thank you. As others have noted, I was very involved in Measure K, which provided the biggest increase in funding for affordable housing in Palo Alto in decades. $3 million a year toward affordable housing, more than doubling our local funds that are then leveraged with other resources. I have long supported funding for affordable housing and, and many projects in our community. It's not widely appreciated that Palo Alto has the highest percentage of deed-restricted affordable housing per capita in the county, and we need to continue that. We now have three projects under construction and six more in the pipeline. That's the biggest set of projects in decades, but we need more funding for it. The regional measure needs to come back forward or a revival of the county Measure A that we passed in 2016. And and then continue our strong inclusionary housing, which has resulted in many, many hundreds of units.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Burt. We're, we're currently, right now, we have over 3,000 affordable housing units that we are hoping to construct under our, under our new housing element. Currently, we have 517 affordable housing units in the pipeline with more that we hope to continue. But really, the state has shown that we are going to be on our own to be able to construct these. Back in 2022, the state had a $307 billion budget, which was a $100 billion deficit, and they only gave $1 billion for actual housing production across the state. So we got to find different ways in order to be able to do this. I've been on the, on the Housing Ad Hoc Committee, trying to identify additional funds. One of the ones that I'm excited for the possibility of is a vacancy tax on ghost homes in Palo Alto. We currently have about 2,000 vacant houses. That's about 7.5% of our housing stock. By taxing those, if we do what some other cities have done, possibly we could raise up to between $5 to $15 million a year on affordable housing.
Thank you. Ms. Cribbs.
I appreciate what others have said and appreciate the stock that we're developing right now. I think we really need to look at partnering with the affordable housing developers and look at public-private partnerships in maybe areas that we haven't looked before, work with developers, and also I'm interested in looking at the best practices across the state in other areas. And bring back the regional measure that was just put down.
Thank you. All right, now we go to another question. There are many challenges we face regarding aging infrastructure, including the need for electrical system upgrades, flood prevention, rail crossings, and the rollout of high-speed internet. Which of these or others would be your highest priority and why? And for this question, Mr. Burt, you're first.
Well, I don't think we have to make a choice amongst them. They're, they're all high priorities. Our electrical infrastructure, we're already under construction on that, and we have a funding plan in place, and that's going to be scheduled to be complete by 2027, five years ahead of what our staff had originally proposed as a result of the Climate Ad Hoc Committee that I created, and, and basically we push back on staff to accelerate that process. Our grade separations, I was instrumental in getting $400 million through the Measure B campaign in 2016, dedicated to Palo Alto's affordable housing. I now sit on the VTA Board and the Caltrain Board, making sure that's going forward. And our flood protection infrastructure, we must move forward, and there are some innovative alternatives to what has been considered to date on that.
Thank you. Ms. Cribbs.
Yes, I think that all of the priorities that you listed are really priorities for us to address. There are a lot of very smart people in our community and around our community that can put their brains together and decide what to do about a lot of these things. I appreciate living in a flood zone, special attention to sea level rise, and also flood protection.
Thank you. Mr. Lu.
I think electrification and climate adaptation, so including the bridges, are critical table stakes that Palo Alto has an imperative to actually achieve. We have to hit our 20 by 30 goals. We're a privileged community, and we have to show that we can actually lead the way and accomplish this. So we need real political will and very strong position. We also need to prioritize our grade separations, separating trains and car traffic. That's taken 14 years. We still don't have a clear plan. Inflation and escalating costs have really raised questions about what we can possibly still do. We need to decide quickly and actually make decisions. And finally, on fiber, I think this is actually relatively a lower priority. There are alternatives in the market, and we should be really focusing our efforts on the critical climate safety. There are alternatives in the market, and we should be really focusing our efforts on the critical climate, safety, traffic, uh, other improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
And my, my top three would be electrification, grade separations, and flood protection. Uh, I've definitely been a supporter along with Councilmember Bert, trying to move electrification along. It's nice to see that we will have about 95% fully elect, um, um, replacing our electrical grid by 2027, which I have believed has been a real key component in making sure that residents feel comfortable in switching to all-electric. Um, so that's going to be one of our, our key grade separation absolutely must continue to, to advance. We're winnowing down the options, looking forward to that returning to council. Council and myself gave clear direction about minimizing takings for, for those two alternative plans. And then flood protection is, is really key. Uh, we've seen the impact of climate change making flooding worse in Palo Alto. I'm the Vice Chair of the San Francisco, San Francisco Creek, JPA, where we're working on Reach 2 to be able to address that issue for Palo Altons.
Thank you, Ms. Cosi.
Thank you. I agree with my fellow candidates in, um, the priority for me would be both grade rail separation and our climate, in our climate adaptations, including electrification. Having grown up here during our community's mental health, um, crisis, we need to move on grade rail separation in order to protect our community. And I was smiling when you first read this question because having previously worked with Palo Alto community members when they're facing flooding and heat waves, I know what they're navigating currently, including myself. I live in a 100-year-old building that is not climate-proof. It's like many of our old buildings, and it's currently as it does many days in the summer, fall. It's overheating and we have a lot of seniors and, uh, disabled residents who are in this situation and need modern climate-proof housing.
Thank you, Mr. Eskowitz.
I'll pick the toughest. End Suicide Alley. Put the railroad tracks underground. It's the only way to solve the problem. The current plans for grade separation are totally inadequate and a waste of funds. Let's partner with our neighboring cities to lobby Washington for the infrastructure and high-speed rail funds to permanently solve this problem. Southern California has done that. They're getting a huge tranche of funds to extend high-speed rail in their region. Let's do the same. We can't solve this problem within Palo Alto. We have to partner with our neighbors and work together and think bigger and do what New York did in the 1870s. They made Park Avenue. That's what we need here. Bike paths, habitat gardens, where the rail tracks are now.
Thank you, Mr. Rekdahl.
Yes, some of these are really big programs, and you have to take that into account when you're prioritizing. Just because if it takes decades to solve, you have to start earlier. Uh, the infrastructure, the grid upgrades, we have that under control, both the funding and the plans for that. Flood protection, that's a high priority. We know with extreme weather, we will need, have more floods. We'll have wire on fire, and so that is a high priority, get those underway. Uh, grade separation is very important. That's going to take a long time. But that also is dependent on Caltrain's ridership. Right now, the Caltrain ridership still has not come back. So that's a big variable in there. But I think the, the wildfire and the flood protection, we know will happen, and we have to prioritize solving those problems.
Thank you, Ms. Templeton.
Thank you very much. It's a great question, something that we're all thinking a lot about is how do you prioritize this? And I, I think if I'm understanding, um, the prioritization inputs, one of the things that I think about is who's, who is at risk and what kind of risk are they at? So for me, grade separation is very important. Can whoever is not muted, please mute. I'm getting some feedback. Um, but the grade separation is really important. I worked for two years on the grade separation committee studying the alternatives. I don't think undergrounding is feasible. We, uh, investigated that pretty seriously and ruled it out. Um, and I, I would hate to see people have to lose their homes. Uh, and I'm, I'm glad we're looking at ways as a city to reduce the takings. But, um, I would really like to make a decision and move forward on, on how we're going to do grade separation because of the number of lives that are currently at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will remember, remind all the candidates, uh, to mute yourselves if you're not speaking. Thank you. All right. Uh, question three. Many Palo Altons go to neighboring cities to shop, and the city faces a retail vacancy rate from 10 to 15%. When can, what, what can the city do to reduce our business district vacancies and attract people to downtown and California Avenue? And Mr. Stone, you're first for this one.
Well, this is one of the, one of my top four priorities, uh, for, for my reelection bid. I'm calling it Palo Alto Connect, trying to connect Palo Altons to more and more events, trying to connect Palo Altons to nature, to city government, to a variety of ways. And one of the ways in which I think we can do that is by promoting more at events and activities for, for people to be able to kind of come out and enjoy our downtown, our California, uh, and our California Avenue. I've been talking to so many residents over the last year who tell me that they go to Redwood City, Menlo Park, Sunnyvale for various activities and events that they are putting on, both during the weekends and the weekdays. We are exporting Palo Altons to shop in those cities, and we need to bring them back to Palo Alto. So I'm looking forward to reinvesting in both our downtown and our California Avenue and creating a more sense of space and that third place for residents to really be able to come back and shop in some of our, um, great shopping districts.
Thank you, Mr. Bert.
Um, I'm passionate about our retail areas. They're the vibrant areas that, uh, our community values highly. Uh, we have a big transformation that is occurring, uh, in the retail environment. We have far fewer workers in the office that were supporting them, and we have far greater shopping online. As a result, I've been a big advocate and, uh, helped drive our efforts at retail transformation, investing in the infrastructure. It's going too slowly. Uh, the current council has had a much stronger commitment to, um, these investments, and we need to continue to really pressure staff to accelerate the process of, uh, investing in the infrastructure in our various downtown areas. Uh, the special events are an incredibly valuable part of that, uh, and to build off of our great success at Third Thursday and our farmers markets and others.
Thank you, Ms. Cribs.
Yes, I'd like to see us make, um, it easier for retailers to open businesses in the empty storefronts at this point and make the programs predictable so that merchants know what to expect and when to expect it. I love the idea of events. I, in the eighties, created a number of events in Palo Alto that are still going on, including the, uh, Moonlight Run, which happens next week, and, um, also the Chili Cookoff and the Mayfair Parade. I think that it's important to work with the owners and, um, the shoppers to find out what everybody wants to do together and, uh, fill those empty office buildings, excuse me, empty retail spaces, and then also make the areas very clean and safe so people are not, um, anxious about going downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Lu.
This is a really personal issue, and it's a top priority for me. Retail in the small business community is a large part of why I actually moved to Palo Alto and also why I joined the Planning and Transportation Commission and why I'm running for city council. So downtown, our vacancy rate is something around 15%. On Calab, it's something around 10%. Firstly, we need to truly invest in our streetscapes. They are first-class public spaces. Calab should not feel like a empty, wide, concrete, uh, hot blacktop. It should feel like a park. We should really invest in the cleanliness, safety, and comfort for the key retail corridors, downtown, Calab, and also Midtown. We need to simplify red tape. I've heard from so many business owners, and I've heard so many horror stories from the potentially historic parking lot at the Nut House to the permits that took months and months. We need to truly simplify and prioritize retail.
Thank you, Ms. Templeton.
Thank you. Great question. It's really interesting, and it's something I think a lot of us have been thinking about. The, there's a couple of approaches, and what the city has taken is, um, to, to do a study of what kind of expertise, um, and expert advice we can get to uh, and make it easier for retail to come back. And they presented a bunch of, uh, recommendations to the, um, Planning Commission a few weeks ago. And it was interesting, um, uh, some of it was like reduce redundancy, bureaucracy, and make it simpler, uh, to open a business. But you also have to think about, you know, how people are interacting with these spaces and how do we drive people? And I like the suggestions about events, but also as we build our new homes that we've agreed to, we also need to make sure that we have mixed-use spaces there and really take advantage of the opportunity to make retail, uh, very attractive and vibrant and active as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cosi.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with the comments of my fellow candidate, George Lu. Um, earlier this year, our local economic advisors said that in order to help our businesses, there's three-step principles, cutting red tape, building dense housing in our retail, having that build above our retail, having that customer base built in and investing in our bicycle and pedestrian and public transit infrastructure around those spaces. So it's easier for customers to get there. When we're citing other cities whose retail is thriving, that's what these other cities have done.
Thank you, Mr. Eskowitz.
Fire the expensive consultants who are telling us you can bring retail back the way it was. The only good idea is densify, and so there are people living above the stores. That'll help. But frankly, it's not going to come back. We're on the internet and we're going to be shopping that way more and more. So what can we do? We can't bring in chain stores. They're going bankrupt everywhere else. With one exception, bring in Barnes and Noble. Invite them to open up in the former Renaissance Hardware Store. That's a sociability space. That's what we need to think of, and not retail, but sociability. And we need to think of a cluster like Haian Y, the Welsh town whose storefronts were empty, but they brought in used bookstores and they became an international tourist attraction. We must think bigger and better. Invite the Stanford Business School students to be our consultants for free. I'm sure we'll get better ideas and more innovation. That's what we need, innovation to bring back useful activities on the ground floors where we're going to build high greenery to live.
Thank you. And Mr. Eskowitz, I will remind you, you need to mute yourself in between answering my questions. Thank you.
I will try to find it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rekdahl.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, retail is a very important part of our quality of life. Uh, and so unfortunately, online shopping and work from home has really changed that. There's significant structural changes to retail. But council and PTC both have been working hard on this already. Uh, we've been working to simplify zoning and streamline permitting, and we need to continue that because it's really important work. The other thing is streetscape. Calab and downtown, it's just taking far too long. We really need to prioritize that and get that turned around. Right now, it's not nearly as attractive as it could be, and that's a big driver for new businesses to have an attractive place to come to. Uh, special events, that's a really good idea. Uh, Third Thursday has been a wonderful, uh, event. But also just, we need more interaction with the business community. We need to understand their problems, understand how can we solve their problems? And that interaction is, is essential to solving this problem.
Thank you. All right, our next question. Regardless of whether the city is able to add acreage at the Coverly site for a new community center, what funding source should be used to build it? And Mr. Lu, you're first for this question.
Yeah, we really need to get a deal done on Coverly. This is decades in the making. Coverly continues to deteriorate. And yet despite that, it is such an amazing community space that, uh, could really reach its potential if we invested. Specifically on funding, um, we need to invest in Coverly because we are prioritizing housing in South Palo Alto, along the San Antonio corridor. And all residents deserve the best services that match, um, services like Rinconada or, uh, other, uh, kind of, or services downtown or so on. We really need impact fees from those new developments to go specifically and be specifically allocated to Coverly. And we also, uh, need to use our park funds appropriately and if needed, uh, issue a bond.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Yeah, Coverly needs to continue to be a top priority. City Council has been negotiating with the, with the school district to be able to make this happen. And, you know, we, we do have impact fees that are going to be spent on community centers such as Coverly, but those, the, the, the current funds that we have in there and the projections for those funds are not going to be able to be enough to be able to create the type of community center that Palo Altons want and deserve and will expect for, uh, for a modern community center that will be able to serve South Palo Alto for the next 50 to 100 years. So, um, it, it's likely going to need, mean that we're going to have to go to the voters for a bond, uh, in 2026 is my, is my hope. So that way we can be able to start construction and have that and have a new community center at Coverly, uh, in the next several years, and I'm looking forward to leading on that.
Thank you, Ms. Cosi.
Thank you. I agree with Mayor Stone that I believe a bond measure will be necessary. Looking at the beautiful new community center in, uh, South San Francisco, where it's just such a wonderful space that is completely elevated to South San Francisco. You also see all of the community members and private entities that have donated to help make that space a reality.
Thank you. Mr. Eskowitz. Now you have to unmute yourself, Mr. Eskowitz.
Okay.
Here, thank you.
Coverly is great as it is, providing space for dozens of nonprofits to do their job. Let's leave them in peace. Instead, think again about the parking lots. Let's build affordable housing on those parking lots, and we can have a clubhouse, swimming pool, ice skating rink as part of that clubhouse. So don't disturb what's working. If it's working well, leave it alone. And when we build again, we can use naming rights. A lot of the people here in Palo Alto can afford and would love to give back to the city. Let them indulge and support a community center named after them. We don't need to spend public money for things that private interests will be willing to support.
Thank you, Mr. Rekdahl.
Yeah, Coverly is a really important part of our life down in South Palo Alto here. It's used heavily today, and as we add people, it's going to be even more heavily used. So we really do need to make this a priority. We do have some funding. We have impact fees that come in that apply to this, but as Greer mentioned, it's insufficient. We'll have to have some type of bond issuance and that likely backed by, say, a parcel tax. The impact fees, when I was on Parks and Rec, we did our, uh, our study to price the impact fees, and we really lowballed it. We, they, the proper calculations would have been much higher. The problem is that even at these low levels, we're getting pushed back from HCD that impact fees inhibit housing. So even though impact fees may be the right route, uh, we have to also negotiate with HCD and make sure that we're not inhibiting housing.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, hang on one sec. Uh, Ms. Templeton.
Thank you. Great question. Um, I spent a lot of time when my kids were younger at Coverly. I think we probably spent the first 10 years there from preschool family through dance connection and other after-school activities. It's a magical nexus of activity for Palo Alto. So it's definitely worth investing in. Um, to your question of how will it be funded? I think we need to take the long view. It probably could fund itself depending on how we structure it and how, uh, we decide to build it out. Again, I think mixed use is really practical here because you do have so much space that we want to, to make available for, um, activities that are, you know, focused on our seniors and our young people and our, uh, act, activities like dancing and, uh, learning piano and Taekwondo. So we do have a lot of different, um, like lower-income, lower-margin people that want to use it. But we also have space above it, right? As we build it out, so we can think about ways to generate revenue from it possibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bert.
Thank you. So we've had an impasse on being able to acquire enough land at Coverley to actually take the ball in our own hands and renovate it. I've served the last year to break that impasse. We think we're on the cusp of an agreement with the school district, add seven acres. It will give us 15 acres and that gives us enough for the city to take charge on where we go from here. The notion that impact fees, park or community center impact fees would be able to cover what is probably easily $200 million in a renovation there is just not realistic. We are likely to need to go to the voters for a bond for this measure like we did for the library bond. And it's going to be up to the community to decide whether they're willing to really commit to what's needed to be done. And I'm looking forward to that coming forward in 2026.
Thank you. Ms. Cribs, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I've been working with a group of people for the last two and a half or three years on a new gym for Palo Alto. And it occurs to us that the eight acres that we currently own at Coverley could be the starting point, a Kickstarter for a new Coverley Community Center. And we would fund it by the city providing the land and the nonprofit providing the funding through a public private partnership, very much like the Junior Museum and some of the other things that have been done in the past. This would show Palo Alto that we can put together a exciting community center. We'd have a gym, which we are very much in need of right now. And then the remainder of Coverley, once the agreements get made with the school district, could be utilized. And some of the plans from the past, Coverley master plans could be also utilized.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next question. What do you see as the greatest challenge for our city budget? What philosophy would you bring to the budget process? And Ms. Cossey, you're first for this one.
Sounds good. It's a nice question to have after we've all been talking about funding housing and and also all the things in the community we love and want to invest in. And I think when, you know, budgets are value statement and and when you're looking at budgets, it is what is the realistic impact on it? Is it impact on our staff's jobs, on their long term well being, on us retaining and attracting the best staff possible? What are the major projects that's delaying? So I think it's really looking at what is the real impact on our, in our community, on people's lives? If we adjust something, you know, does it impact? If we limit, if we delay a park, does it impact a community member's mental health or their safety, et cetera?
Thank you. Mr. Eskowitz. You will have to unmute.
Okay, zero based budgeting. You start from the beginning and say, what do you want of what you already have and what new things do you want to do? So when you do that, usually come up with, you still want your police, fire, libraries. So it almost comes out to the same, but there are some changes you can make and see. The biggest one I see practical is to stop this high spending on consultants. Let's involve the Stanford students in the business school, the education school, and make use of this talent, which occasionally is brought in to rethink things like the railroad question several years ago. But we're not using our free resources. Let's make use of them and save some money that we can then put into new ideas. But and to raise money from people who would like to donate and have things named after them, I think is the way to go forward. An ice skating rink, on a gym, on new activities and clubhouses for the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Rektal.
Yeah. We've, with COVID hurting our revenue, we've really been struggling just to balance our operational budget. We still don't have fully staffed firehouses and our public safety still is below what it was before COVID. So that is a challenge just by itself. But then you put on things like affordable housing or sea level rise. Those are just insurmountable. We have to go through and we have to find state or regional funding sources for those big projects because we can't swallow that on our own. It's just far too much.
Ms. Templeton.
Thank you. Yes, I think in budget discussions, sometimes we find ourselves in a trade off between things that are the hot topic or the most controversial topic. And we want to really dig into it and spend a lot of time discussing it and spend a lot of money on it. And we don't spend a lot of that energy on making sure that we're maintaining the things that we all agree on, like maintaining our public safety, making sure our streets are safe. And that when we have an incident, that the roads are improved in that area where the incident occurred. So, oh, sorry, the timer's not going. So I'll just wrap it up. That's okay. Um, I, I would say that that's the most contentious part of budget planning. Of course, we need to plan for, we need to plan to make sure that all of our public safety items are covered and that we can maintain ongoing operations and that our employees are paid well. We also need to make it attractive to work here. And that's going to address the contractor problem, by the way, because we can attract people that will want to work here by changing some ways that how we're engaging with our staff and our employees, giving them more meaningful engagement with the leadership, making sure that we're treating them respectfully. And since we had the timer malfunction, I'll wrap it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bert.
Thank you. So during my terms on the council, I led the creation of a funding source for infrastructure master plan that had been 20 years seeking a solution through incentivizing creation hotels and then increase hotel taxes dedicated to the infrastructure plan in 2021. I led the restoration of services that were overcut and drastically cut in public safety and youth services and others. And then led the creation of the Measure K, which added those funds. Going forward, what we really need to focus on is how we can have a more sustainable expenses and not just revenue. This coming year, I have within the finance committee agenda is to really look in a thoughtful way at our use of consultants. Not the consultants play a vital role, but I'm concerned that we've gone too far in our use of consultants and are not really controlling them adequately.
Thank you. Ms. Cribs.
Yes, I would protect police, fire, public safety and community services. Definitely look for other funding sources and aggressively look both from the feds and the state and private foundations. I am interested in looking at expenses and seeing how we can control various expenses. And then the idea of naming rights is very attractive to me as well.
Thank you. Mr. Lu.
Thank you. First of all, I absolutely agree with others who said that restoring basic services and stabilizing them is essential, whether that's public safety or youth services. Our budgets are stretched. Affordable housing, grade separation, streetscapes, Coverley, climate resiliency, a gym, these are all big ticket items. We need to, first of all, actually make priorities. We need to decide what we can bite off and when. And we need to understand where we can go in terms of a bond and other funding from the county, state or federal government. We also really need to be more efficient at delivering these projects. The Palo Alto process actually blows up a lot of these costs. It adds years of delay, which in our current environment has meant millions of dollars of extra costs. That's a real way where we can be more efficient and deliver more for Palo Altons. I'll also echo some of the other comments. We need to build in-house expertise that's sustainable in our community and not reliant on consultants.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you. And it's clear we have to find ways to be able to prioritize what we care most about. And one of the things that I've cared most about is making sure that we are, that we are rebuilding our public safety departments in that in that post pandemic world. And I've, I've led on issues to make sure that we are able to do that. One example, I believe it was last year when I was on the finance committee, finance committee, we approved a hire ahead program for our police department where they are able to. So one of the problems, it takes about 18 months for a police officer to go from submitting their application to being boots on the ground. And we approved a program for them to be able to start hiring people before we actually have those vacancies in the department. And that has significantly decreased vacancies there, working with fire to be able to do something similar. And we've also been really putting in a lot of resources to reduce vacancies across the city. We now have a vacancy rate citywide about 10% and that is the lowest that we have seen in a very long time in Palo Alto.
Thank you. All right, our next question has to do with climate. In order to protect city infrastructure and people's investment in their homes and their homes and property, what should the city do now to prepare for the expected sea level rise and flooding later this century? You've, many of you have mentioned this, now you get to drill down. For this question, Mr. Rektal, you're first.
Okay. Well, first for the, to reduce our carbon footprint, we really have to be aggressive going into electrification. We've kind of gone up a learning curve for the heat pump, water heater, and now we have to go for a whole house and do the lessons learned to to make that more successful. We also have to have time of use pricing that will really encourage people to to reduce their carbon use, the cheaper solar when it's available. And then you have the grid modernization we've talked about, that's that's underway, but that's an essential part of this. So there's a lot of stuff on on the carbon footprint side, but also then on the adaption side. We have a lot of work to do with the planning, what kind of levees we have, what kind of fire protection. We have to, in the foothills, we have to reduce the fire source, but also have better plans for evacuation and recovery from fire.
All right, thank you. Ms. Templeton.
Thank you. And this is a really important question because our community is so close to the sea. And so we need to think about where are we at risk? As Commissioner Rektal mentioned, we need to focus on the the wetlands and making sure that we have the ability to protect those. And that might mean creating some walls in that area or raising our our roads in that area. But it may also mean not doing too much development in that area. So we need to be really thoughtful about where we're planning to build and that it's not going to make new properties be even at more risk for sea level rise. And I think we should also think about how to, how to do this in cost effective ways because we now have a little bit of time to plan, but the the danger is coming our way. But the main thing is, is think about the zoning and where we're going to build and and where we're going to protect those areas that are closest to the sea level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bert.
Well, I serve on the Bay Conservation and Development Commission specifically because of my concern over climate impacts. In that case, they are the agency responsible for the leadership throughout the entire Bay Area on sea level rise. We have a plan that is called Bay Adapt, which is looking at all of the measures that all of the regions of the entire Bay Area are going to do. Palo Alto was actually at the forefront of that. We have adopted a sea level strategic plan several years ago. And now we're updating that plan. It should be coming back to the council shortly. But there is much more we need to do. We're leaders on what are natural levy systems. The President of the United States came and did an event here specifically because we're at the forefront of that. But my greater concern is wildfire risk in our, coming into our local region. And I think that's an even more acute climate risk than sea level rise today.
Thank you. Ms. Cribs.
Yes, thank you. I can, I share Councilmember Bert's concern about fire and what we're doing about planning for fire. Going back to just plain climate change, moving to electrical as soon as possible is really important. But it's also important to recognize that it's going to be expensive for all of our residents and we have to help everybody make the, make the change. I think it's important to acknowledge that this is definitely a crisis, that that we really need to address it and understand that. I like the idea of making sure that we're protecting building and development, certainly not in in the wetlands. And I think the most important mantra should be, we cannot afford to to slow down. That we have policies in place, but we have to go faster and make them more, more strict.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
As I mentioned before, I'm the vice chair of the San Francisco Kito Creek Joint Powers Authority. We're currently reaching on, what was currently working on the Reach Two part of the project that's really going to be able to, to enhance protections for Palo Alto and surrounding communities to prevent flooding that occurs from San Francisco Kito Creek, like we saw during the New Year's Eve storm and flood just a couple of years ago. That needs to be a top priority for the city council to continue to support the the JPA on that work. And I'm constantly trying to, trying to speed up that process as as well because it's taking too long. Definitely agree, we already, we are already working on mutual partnerships and with regional groups to be able to prevent the sea level rise. And this is a huge issue in Palo Alto. About 50% of Palo Alto homes are located, are located within a flood zone. And so being mindful of that, as well as when we're looking at expanding development, to make sure we're not doing that in in flood zones, especially on the other side of 101.
Thank you. Mr. Lu.
Yeah, we absolutely need to prioritize adaptation. We need to move forward with planning for our bridges in San Francisco Kito Creek. We need to work on fire resilience. We also need to make sure that Baylands flooding, in particular, the Palo Alto Flood Basin Tide Gate project actually goes smoothly. And we need to work with Valley Water and the US Army Corps of Engineers to actually get that properly prioritized. Like Harry and Ann said, we need to keep our development footprint in urbanized areas and reduce the amount of risk that we create. And I also agree that with a strong mandate to reduce our own climate emissions and be a responsible, good actor for the broader environment. I think two really underestimated, underestimated elements here are housing. Just having housing in our community in a transit oriented way is a major climate lever. And we also need to truly commit to cycling as well as public transit.
Thank you. Ms. Cossey.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what has been mentioned. I grew up right by the Baylands in dense housing, where we have a lot of dense housing. And one of my core early childhood memories is looking out my window and seeing that high water level during the winter, during the storms. And I know that's a reality many Palo Altons have experienced. And I agree with the, with the previous commenters. It is going to take working with state and federal partners to make sure we keep ahead on this work. I'm proud to be endorsed by the League of Conservation Voters, Santa Clara County and Silicon Valley 350 Climate Action, who will vet candidates on these issues.
Thank you. Mr. Eskowitz.
Give back to the Westlands. Let's start by closing the Palo Alto Airport and moving it to Moffett Field and use that space for an expanded duck pond, expand Bixby Park by 100 acres. Expand green space. Don't build on the industrial area at San Antonio. Move the housing to the shopping center. Make that an urban forest, plant an urban forest. We must increase our green space. And we must put photovoltaics on all rooftops, not just of individual homes, but of the shopping areas, the housing that we build, green photovoltaics. I support Senator Becker's bill to incentivize. We have only 7% of Stanford University roofs have photovoltaics. We must encourage this to be expanded to 100% and this be done throughout our city. I've been a photovoltaics advocate and entrepreneur for over 50 years, and this is the way to electrify.
Thank you. All right, for our next question. We have a little extra time, so I'm going to give you a minute and a half to answer this next question. And it's a long question. Here you go. It's about, it's about train crossings. Many community members have lost track of what options are still being considered for rail crossings, hybrid, viaduct, underpass. Many community members have lost track of what options are still being considered for rail crossings, hybrid, viaduct, underpass, trench. What option do you favor and why? There's more. What will we do about traffic at Charleston and Meadow for the next few years until we solve the grade separation? Traffic would be at a stalemate during rush hour with electrification starting this month. All right, so you have a minute and a half now, and Ms. Cribs, you're first.
Thank you very much. I one of those residents who's confused about the options right now, and so I've had some tutorials from people who are knowing more about this option, so I would like to just say that I know that this is coming, that things have to be looked at for sure. But we have to take into consideration the use of the train and how how it's going to work as people change their habits. I want the kids to be safe when they go to school. And so I'm thinking that the combination of some of the lower cost alternatives would be the ones that that I would I would favor, and I look forward to knowing more about it as things move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lou.
Yeah, like I said, this is a discussion that's over a decade in the making. And we have to lead and we have to make decisions where there is no perfect solution. Just to tee up a little bit more of the framework that I used to think about this, there are actually academic studies about why American transit projects blow up in costs. And one of the great sins that we can could commit as city council members is to kind of pull up eliminated options, revisit past decisions, and actually go backwards. We have to be disciplined, and we actually have to always move forwards. We have to build on the work of X cap and city council unless there are really compelling reasons otherwise. In terms of my personal preferences, on Churchill, I actually prefer the backup option, which is actually closing Churchill. For me, this is more rational in terms of cycling access or Paly, which is a safety risk right now and is a point of congestion. On Meadow and Charleston, I favor a hybrid approach. That's taking the trains a little bit higher and the roads a little bit lower. This is a sane, normal approach that many cities use. We don't have final pricing, but this is likely fiscally responsible. And it also avoids neighborhood disruption. It's more interpretable for every user, cars, pedestrians, and cyclists. And avoids the complexity that we really love to impose ourselves on ourselves with other options.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Thanks. Well, I don't think we I don't think we should go back. We've been making a lot of progress on on our grade separations and winnowing down the options through years of public engagement and work from committees, council, and and our community. I think we are on our way to being able to make that to to be able to make that decision. On Churchill, I believe the partial underpass that council has identified as the preferred alternative is the correct alternative. There are there were concerns raised by the school district if we were to close Churchill regarding bus access. And of course, the neighborhood there as well, talking of being concerned about cutting off access the neighborhood had there through through Churchill. On the other two crossings, right now we have the hybrid and the underpass option. And we're only at about, I want to say, fi- five to ten percent of kind of of the design on those. And so council has advanced both of those with some clear directive to to staff as far as wanting to see minimizing takings there. So I'm interested to see what those I interested to see those developed designs come back to see how has staff been able to minimize takings and increase bicycle and pedestrian safety and reduce, of course, traffic ingestion at those intersections is going to be absolutely key.
Thank you, Mr. Bert.
Thank you. So first, I want to correct the premise of the question. We will not have gridlock upon the new Caltrain electrification schedule. Prior to COVID, we were at six trains an hour and heavier traffic than we have today. The new schedule at peak hour is four trains per hour, and so it's actually considerably reduced. And the protection long term for Caltrain is now significantly less than what was the premise when we were beginning the grade separation studies. We still have challenges. The alternatives at Meadow and Charleston that we are pursuing are the underpass and the hybrid. My personal preference at this point in time, presuming that we can mitigate the property acquisition potentials is the underpass. The hybrid is not going down a little bit and up a little bit. It's going or going down a little bit, four feet and up sixteen feet. It would be an earthen wall blocking and separating the sides of the city. At Churchill, we actually have another option that we are currently discussing at both our rail committee meeting, I encourage people to attend, and at Caltrain, which is recognizing that with the blooming costs and the reduction in number of trains and traffic from what was previously projected, including the forward projections, that we may be able to do a series of mitigations that address the issues.
Thank you, Mr. Etzkowitz.
My first principle is no land takings. Increase green space. Build a linear park, working together with our neighbor cities to acquire the funds from the federal government to put the trains underground. Let's go back to eighteen seventy when this was done in New York City. We can do it here. The funds are available. We must we must we must work together with others to lobby for them. Inevitably, train traffic will increase. Sooner or later, the high speed rail will come, and there's only one corridor where that can work. Let's put it underground and suicide alley once and for all. Think big. Don't take people's houses and backyards. Don't divide our city by building a wall between two halves. Unite the city by building a park avenue across the city and increase our green space.
Thank you, Mr. Rektal.
Yeah. Even though this whole process has taken a long time, it's incorrect to say that we're behind the Palo Alto's behind. Caltrain just came back and changed the ground rules. And so this this is an evolving process, and we are not behind. We are working with Caltrain now and finding designs that meet both their requirements and our requirements. For the for Churchill, closing it would be very bad. Traffic in Barkadero or El Camino is bad today. It's could be even worse. So closing Churchill is not a good idea, either having the partial underpass or not not changing at all would be a better option. For the South Palo Alto, the hybrid versus underpass. You know, as Councilmember Bert said, having a viaduct up there really visually divides the city plus the the poor residents whose house backs up to that. That's really not a good environment. So I my strong preference would be underpass. Underpass solves those problems, but also has the potential of being the fastest and the least expensive. So that would be my personal preference, but we're only at five percent engineering right now. Our grant that we receive will bump us up to thirty percent engineering, and we need to do that to to reduce the amount of takings or acquisitions required for the the underpasses.
Thank you, Ms. Templeton.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the chance to talk this through, and it's wonderful to hear this variety of ideas. It's very much like what our experience was when we were talking about this on the X cap. It's complicated, and everything about it is going to be a trade off in one part of town or another part of town. I don't support any kind of undergrounding. I think it would be an environmental disaster, and it would block our underground water aquifers from supporting our forest here, and not to mention it'd be technically complex and probably prone to breaking as engine engineering solutions can be sometimes. So I would put that aside, and I would suggest that we do need to find a solution that maximizes safety and minimizes cost. If only it was just that simple. We do have challenges at this in the south area, especially I've talked to residents along Park, and they're like, well, I don't I don't want to, you know, have it be worse than it is right now. We're hearing a lot of noise. We have a lot of trains. We have a lot of incidents. And, you know, there's a potential that raising the the tracks could could be worse, but it also could be better, and we need to really explore that. And that was one of the options that council several years ago took off the table. So I'd like to reconsider that now that we have a new council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cossey.
Thank you. As I was saying earlier, this is a very important issue to me, having grown up here during our youth mental health crisis. And one of the number one recommendation we got from mental health professionals during that time was to get great rail separation done fast in order to protect our community. When we were earlier in this process, my first choice was always the viaduct because that model separates the train most from people, and it's models that have that degree of separation that keep people to safety. Now that we are further along in the process, my priority is always getting this done as fast as possible. And so of the current options at the table, I do prefer the underpass. And during this time where we may have some delays with traffic during construction, that is a great time for us to explore what we can do to incentivize people to alternatives to driving and get them out of their cars. Can we provide discount transit passes? What can we do for pop up bike infrastructure to get people out of their cars? We have climate goals we need to meet in getting people out of out of their cars and in public transit bikes and walking. So that's a great opportunity for that.
Thank you. All right. Our next question, we're back to one minute answers. Palo Alto council campaigns are expensive compared to several nearby cities. To lessen the appearance of undue influence and encourage candidates without access to wealth to run, what changes, if any, would you support if elected? Let's see for this question, Ms. Templeton, you're first.
Awesome, thank you. I think there's a couple of things that we should consider that our nearby cities have been able to accomplish. One would be voluntarily going to districts, and I know that that is something we have known about, and we've sort of been as a city waiting until the city has been sued before investigating and pursuing that. But having a smaller area to campaign in would certainly reduce the cost of campaigning. The other thing to consider is campaign limits. Our contribution limits could be as low as a thousand dollars. Currently, they're fifty five hundred, and that's a reduction in because we're now following a state cap. But we've seen contributions of that size and larger in recent campaigns. So I think it would be nice to to think about those two areas as the first and easiest to implement as we have good examples near us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cossey.
I'm going to echo Carrie Templeton's comments. Then after running now, we absolutely need to switch to district elections. It's going to drive down the cost significantly. And not just that, it's going to give us better representation on council. Each of our neighborhoods have very different needs, and they really need that representation to get a more efficient process. And we also, I love door knocking, and I want to be able to knock on every door in my district. And right now it's it's a lot for every candidate to try to knock on every door in Palo Alto. It's too big an area for one person to be overseeing.
Thank you, Mr. Etzkowitz.
My campaign is based on zero financing, except for the twenty five dollar filing fee. That's all we've spent so far. We've just used under unused paper in our office to put out some flyers. So I would say modestly publicly funded campaigns, really modest, like five hundred dollars for each candidate. And let's talk to the voters in forums like Leagues Organized. Let's expand this mode of communication and campaign and campaigning so that we don't spend large amounts of money and leave it to those who have money to be able to get their message across. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rektal.
Yeah, campaigns are very expensive. I'm sure all everyone here can agree with that. Campaign contribution limits sound like a really good idea, but in practice, as long as there's political action committees, they're meaningless because now anyone can get around that. So any type of contran- campaign contribution limit, I think, is a no go. District elections also sound good, but in practice, a lot of cities who've switched that have a hard time getting qualified candidates in every district. And you may have people running unopposed, and that's not good. So even though this current system situation is not ideal, I think it's the lesser of the possible evils.
Thank you, Ms. Cribs.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm learning it's very expensive to run for city council, and it feels like everybody should be encouraged to be able to run and have a much more inclusive council. So I would like to see campaign limits. I don't know what the right amount is, but certainly under a thousand dollars a person. I love the transparency that is happening now of knowing who's giving what to whom. And I also think that it's great that our city contributes the candidate statement instead of charging for it. And I don't think that the city should further should contribute any money further than than that.
Thank you, Mr. Bert.
Thank you. Well, I agree with Keith and Ann. This reminds me of the quote by H.L. Mencken that says, for every complex problem, there's a simple solution, and it's usually wrong. And we have real problems. If you look at Santa Clara, outside expenditures for their council race was three million dollars. And we can limit local contributions by our citizenry and then have that massive kind of outside contribution. Similarly, district elections. I I found them appealing for some of the reasons that Katie mentioned, but what we're seeing is a proliferation of uncontested races as a result of that. And Palo Alto does not appear to be vulnerable to the demands for district elections that others have been. And we don't want candidates who are focused on merely parochial issues of their district. That's the other dilemma is we want candidates who are looking citywide at our collective interest.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
I think the pros and cons of this have been well articulated all already. I'm definitely open to the discussion about reasonable campaign finance reform, but I do have concerns, especially with some of these limitations that the that the United Supreme Court has put on camp. I mean, especially we, you know, jurisdictions can't preclude campaign finance caps on an individual. If an individual wants to spend unlimited amounts of money on behalf of their campaign, there is nothing that we'd be able to do about that. And so I do have a concern that a wealthy person could simply, especially if caps are are if if we do have additional caps, that there would be nothing that we'd be able to do there. But if there are ways to get around that, I'd be very curious to hear them. I think some volunteer caps makes a lot of sense. And then just on the on the districts, yeah, I'm also concerned about unintended consequences there. It gives voters fewer choices. It has been nice to be a representative of the entire city, not just my neighborhood. As has always been mentioned, with Menlo Park, Saratoga, and other cities that have districts have had to cancel their elections because nobody's filing.
Thank you, Mr. Lou.
Firstly, I really appreciate the League of Women's Voters' efforts on this over years and recent proposals over the last couple of years. It is really discouraging. I really thought twice about whether I wanted to run a race where candidates might need to raise up to a hundred thousand dollars. And I look at Mountain View where they have a culture where basically all candidates accept a thirty five thousand voluntary budget cap. And would wish in the future cycles coordinate to try to bring something similar to Palo Alto. I think we still can push other reforms. To the extent possible, we should push for every bit of transparency that we can, both for all contributions and also for well, impending expenses where possible. I would support donation caps. I know candidates have adopted voluntary donation caps in the past, and codifying that would make the playing field more fair across the board. And I would also consider overall cap on all campaign expenses.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go to the last audience question now. I'm always surprised how quickly this evening goes. For this question, we'll do one minute answer. And then just to get your expectations and the audience's expectations, then we're going to move to And then just to get your expectations and the audience's expectations, then we're gonna move to the closing question. And then you'll be back to one and a half minutes for that. And that's the which you tell me what you wish you'd been asked. Okay, the last audience question is, what is your favorite Palo Alto tradition and why? And for this, Mr. Burt, you're first.
Um, I would probably say our summer concerts. Um, we attend them regularly, have forever. They're really wonderful traditions. We're back up to six summer concerts. I I'd like to see uh more of our community uh attend them. And and um uh I think that they they bring us together. Uh, they are often, we also have had opportunities to uh showcase local youth talent, uh which is, I think, especially good. And now we're leveraging that into programs like Third Thursday, where they're an extension. When we first did Third Thursday, the city was thinking of as an economic development measure, which it has some value as. But we are now really saying it's a it's a community service. It's bringing the community uh together. And uh and that's extending uh the concert programs now essentially year-round. And uh I really look forward to expanding that.
Thank you. Ms. Cribbs.
Yes, thank you. I think uh one of my favorite traditions is the Mayfete Parade. Um, bringing families, kids, schools, organizations together to um march down University Avenue to school bands and end up at Heritage Park, sharing the wonderful parts of our community.
Thank you. Mr. Lu.
There are a lot of good ones. I love the Winter Lodge. I love the Chili Cook-Off. Um, but I will specifically highlight Third Thursday, which I hope is a recurring new tradition uh for the future of Calab. It's an amazing event. I've gone to, I think, all but one or two of them. Um, and I look forward it to it to becoming a proper tradition here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stone.
Oh, there's so many, so many good ones. And as somebody who grew up in Palo Alto, I have a lot of fond memories, especially of events that are no more. Um, and I really hope to be able to bring some of those back and really expand on that. But my current favorite is is the Chili Cook-Off. I think it's a great opportunity for the community to be able to come together. It's always so well-attended. Um, it's just a great, a a great Fourth of July celebration for the for the community. And I'd love to see us to be able to do uh more of that. I I was very glad council this year approved a new position of an events coordinator. And I wanna see us expand that type of that that type of hiring and that type of focus uh on city staff to be able to ensure how can we bring back things also that we have lost. I remember when I was a kid, I remember my parents taking me to, I remember the snow put out, I think, on on King's Plaza and activities in downtown. Um, like that. So I'd love to see us get back to that.
Thank you. Ms. Cosi.
Okay, I'm so glad you mentioned the snow because I also remember that growing up and nobody's brought that up in a long time. Um, so they don't do this every year, but the Stanford Theater often in October will show classic horror movies like Frankenstein and Dracula. That is my favorite thing to do every year. They're currently doing film noir for October. And if anybody wants to come with me, I know we're all busy these days, but you are welcome to.
Thank you. Mr. Etzwick.
The El Camita, the El Camita lunch for seniors. I'd like to see this spread from lunch to dinner and moved into all spaces around the city, not just in one place. I live in Oak Creek where we had a vibrant clubhouse with a Sunday brunch every Sunday. But this all ended when Stanford took over. I wanna see this tradition brought back and spread around Palo Alto. This is where our neighbors met each other and met our friends. This is what people said when we had a meeting to discuss what could be done to improve the situation. So I think we need to create new traditions by building upon old ones that have lost. And the first one I would like to see, though, is third spaces, sociability for seniors with young people, intergenerational schmoozing.
Thank you. Mr. Rektal.
Yeah, in my single days, it was easy, the Moonlight Run. We would go, friends would go down and run together down the Baylands. That was a really good experience. But once I had kids, I was easily displaced. The Mayfete became the new winner. Uh, you know, seeing my kids get excited when they're in preschool and they'd march in the with their float for the preschool, that was really fun. And then in junior high, when they got to march in the marching band, that was very rewarding. So that's a really good experience. And then finally, when I became a commissioner, I became part of the parade and we marched down and ha- give out handouts to the kids. And they get so excited when you give them any little toy. You know, that was fun. So I have a lot of good memories from Mayfete. So that's the winner.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Templeton.
Thank you. Um, uh, when I first heard your question, I I thought um that you meant what is our our tradition with our family and not necessarily something that was a community thing. But I'm hearing the questions and I think all the ones I might have mentioned have been uh brought up, like the the Fourth of July Chili Cook-Off, the parades, uh even something new like um Third Thursday on California Avenue. We do have a lot of fun with that. But my my true answer is the the traditions that I have with my kids and and our family. Um, we love being able to go to the Magical Bridge Park and be able to have um coffee or hot chocolate at AIDAS afterwards and enjoy being in this beautiful community center and being with other children who are um so we're celebrating, we're celebrating each other and we're able to be ourselves there and able to make music and make friends and just relax. And it's a beautiful, beautiful experience and a fun tradition for our family. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move now to the closing question. And you will have a minute and a half to answer this. And the question is, what question do you wish we'd asked you in this forum that we didn't ask you? Uh, Mr. Rektal, you're first. And this is in the reverse order of opening, just so you remember. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, um. The thing that I wish you'd asked is, what have you learned from dealing with the city? In the last twelve years, I've been a commissioner and and on work groups. But even before that, I was uh interacting, going to city council meetings and giving public comment and things like that. And what I've learned is that, first of all, prioritizing and listening is really important. Uh, you know, understanding everyone's uh perspective is very important. Uh, both my fellow commissioners or residents, quite often residents have insight that I don't have. If they live near a project, they bring up points that I haven't thought of. Uh, talking to the business owners, what are their problems? That's really important. I really understand that. And it helps me make a better decision. The better, more I listen, the better commissioner I am. And then the second is collaboration is really important. Uh, we have, some of these things are really complex. When we're in Xcap, uh, you think you have the right answer, then you talk more and you realize that you don't have the right answer, that there's and you have to really cooperate and compromise. And that that's really important. And also, the the third thing is timely decisions. I mean, Palo Alto has this reputation for being slow, but part of that is that we're just dealing with some such complex decisions that you can't make a quick decision. You know, a quick bad decision is not better than a slow good decision. And so understanding the importance of finding the the uh sweet spot between being too slow, but also being too hasty. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cribbs.
Sorry, would you repeat the question again? I would, the my Zoom was going in and out. I'm sorry.
What question do you wish we had asked you in this forum that we did not ask you?
Um, I wish I wish you'd asked me why I think that my experience uh outside the city uh made it possible for me to run to cit- for a city council.
Say more.
I will. So I've worked on a lot of big um events and big projects over my life. And um the same vision that I would bring to um the city council is a vision that I've used, um including people listening, um getting the work done, creating a vision, having a goal, and um really bringing people together.
Great. Mr. Stone.
Well, first, just wanna thank and uh for joining to not to today, beautiful Saturday afternoon. So thanks for spending it with us and thank you to the League for uh hosting this forum. The question that I wish I got was regarding youth mental health and well-being. This is an issue that really first drove me into public service when I was just twenty-three years old. I graduated from Pally shortly aft- uh shortly before the first uh teen suicide cluster. I lost one of my close high school friends to a suicide as as well. And it's it's really why I applied to the Human Relations Commission in the first place and why I became a teacher as as well. On my first night becoming mayor this year, I formed the Youth Mental Health and Wellbeing Task Force. And we have been working to identify uh needs and policy recommendations for the city council to be able to advance these issues. And already, the city has been in great gains on this issue for the past year. A few examples. We've ident- we will be um creating a new teen center in North Palo Alto that should open sometime in the spring. We're offering free rides to youth trying to seek mental health services um and other just youth um activities through Palo Alto Link. Uh, we're forming a youth climate advisory board. And um I'm working with Palo Alto University on a new partnership with the with the city, as well as the JED Foundation, too, to bring their expertise here to Palo Alto. And it'll be the first of its kind. They've never worked with cities before, but excited to be able to bring their expertise here. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lu.
I wish you had asked, how do we work with our school board and how do we support our schools? So obviously, we are not the school board and uh coverly is also obviously an important issue that we have discussed. But there's a universe of things that we should be thinking about and we should be supporting. So firstly, enrollment in PAUSD has fallen from twelve thousand in twenty eighteen to around ten thousand in twenty twenty-four with more declines projected. That's seventeen percent. And there are a lot of issues driving this. There's no single answer, but the city can influence uh uh influence and support PAUSD. So specifically, like Ria said, I care deeply about teen mental health. Resources should be destigmatized and always available to meet teens where they are. We need safe routes to school that are actually safe. We need to adoption- adopt a vision zero goal. We need to invest in infrastructure, education, and traffic enforcement. We need teacher housing to actually bring affordability to our teachers so we can actually retain uh and support our teachers. And finally, we also need family housing. We need housing that can actually move the needle, invite folks into the community, and create opportunities for more people to benefit uh from the amazing resources of PAUSD. So I think we need a vision for a more inclusive, safer, uh more family-friendly city. And we need to bias towards simplicity as we get there.
Thank you. Mr. Etzkowicz, you're next. Mr. Etzkowicz, you're you're muted.
Okay, so why do we need an innovation scholar on the city council? I think we need it to in order to provide a broader vision of what might be possible. Most of the ideas we have now in city council are partial measures, half-measures. Closing one street and putting a fire duct underneath when that still leaves suicide la- alley open the whole length. So what I think we need to do is bring in new thinking. And so I would do this by calling together in the first hundred days a meeting, drawing together the business talent, the academic talent, and the city talent to brainstorm new ideas for how we can solve these problems to scale. A few thousand homes aren't to be enough to solve affordable housing. We must do it at scale. Ten thousand to twenty thousand new homes, living, working, lost. We can't do this without the university, so we must work more closely with the university to solve these problems, to bring in new ideas, bring in the students with their ideas. Have them be the consultants on each of our issues. Let's work more closely with the university. That's my primary objective as that I would want to see as a city council member. And also to work more closely with the other cities in our region to be able to solve the problems at scale. The railroad will not be solved by Palo Alto by itself.
Thank you. Mr. Burt.
Thank you. Well, I had a few things, but um uh on the de- uh the development side, I uh had wished we had been asked about how we feel about the builder's remedy and and the implications of a potential seventeen-story tower at Molly Stone's or forty stories at the Sunset site. Uh, how we feel about the retail protection ordinance and whether to abolish it or reform it. How we feel about the state law on uh prohibiting any parking requirements within a half mile of Caltrain with new development. And what's the difference between um really having um uh a a a notion about what you'd like to be get done and understanding how to make it happen in government? But most of all, for me, um I I wish we had had a chance to talk more about uh what's our uh our climate action plan and how we have managed as a city to have the a hundred percent carbon-neutral electricity at a half the rate of PG&E. And how are we going to get to our eighty-thirty program through the funding strategy that we currently have going? The EV stra- strategic plan, the building electrification strategic plan, the equity parts of that, those plans. And how do they all come together as an innovative package that is leading us uh in uh a position of being national leaders in this?
Thank you. Ms. Cosi.
Thank you. I think you asked a lot of really incredible questions tonight that were really in-depth and I really appreciate you taking the time. I know how much work it takes for to make these forums happen. If you had asked me about how to best support the diverse community that is Palo Alto, I would have talked about some of the work we've done on human relations with listening sessions with marginalized communities and how I'm running on the city having its first pride celebration and more community cultural events to help really celebrate and recognize all of the diverse community members that we have in Palo Alto.
Thank you. Ms. Templeton.
All right. First of all, I just wanna say thank you again for having this forum and uh for the attendees for paying attention. It's a long set of awesome questions about how to run the city. Uh, what I wish that we had uh been asked is, what is our vision for Palo Alto? And um slightly separate from the some of the practical questions we've had, I'm gonna share with you my vision. Um, you know, in Palo Alto, we we talk a lot about housing and it's really important. But there's more to living life in Palo Alto than a roof and four walls. It's about enjoying your time here. I've spent nearly twenty years here and that's where I live. This is where I choose to live, where I'm privileged enough to live. And I want to enjoy and soak up every minute of life here. And when we talk about housing and our agreements with the state and our mandate and all, I'm thinking, what do we get out of it? How do we make it bring us something special? And how do we make sure that when we're bringing in new families, they get to be part of something special, the joy of living here in Palo Alto? And not the frustrations or, you know, not only focusing on getting our payment in. It's hard enough to live here, but we deserve to enjoy our lives here. And so that's a policy decision. And I'm really hopeful that we will be able to think about Palo Alto in terms of how do we make it even better to live here. Thank you all so much for your time.
All right. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto, I wanna thank all of you candidates for your dedication in choosing to run for office and for participating in our forum tonight. I also wanna thank our audience for your engagement in our democratic process. I believe deeply in that. Uh, for the November fifth general election, the Santa Clara County Leagues are hosting forums for many other races. You can find videos of those forums on and and including this one when we post it on our website, LWVPaloAlto.org. We also encourage you to visit vot411.org. There you'll find nonpartisan There you'll find nonpartisan expanded information about candidates and ballot measures and also links to other sources of information about the upcoming election. For the November fifth general election, all California voters will receive vote by mail ballots, which will be mailed starting on October fifth. We encourage you to vote early by mail uh, or by dropping off your ballot at a secure ballot drop box. Those uh, Dropbox locations are listed in your ballot when you receive it. You can also visit a vote center on or before election day. For example, if you need assistance or require a replacement ballot because you made a mistake or misplaced your ballot. Uh, the locations of the vote centers and days and hours of operations are also listed in your ballot. Please encourage your family, your friends, your neighbors to vote by November fifth. Thank you very much. Good night.